Going to call the meeting to order. For attendance this evening, we, Mr. Yabo will be here shortly, but all board members are present. And we also have a new board member joining us this evening and will be appointed this evening and take the oath of office. So with that, I'll turn it over to, who's going to do that? Jeannie? And then we'll get into our program. So I'd like to introduce Ms. Jennifer O'Brien. She was chosen by the board via interview to fill the vacant seat that was vacated by Ms. Muse, who had to leave her seat because she was. I think that's your mic. Because she moved out of the district and we're pleased to have Jennifer welcome us to the board and through the interview process that we held. And we will now administer the oath of office.
Do you, Jennifer O'Brien solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Board of Education member according to the best of your ability? I do.
So I was reminded that there's a resolution that has to be done as well with this. And I need a motion to approve the appointment of Jennifer O'Brien. Mark, I need a second. Kathleen, all those in favor? All right, approved, the welcome Jennifer. You want to say a few words or you just getting comfortable there?
Is this on? Yes. Yeah, I'm really honored to have been selected to be appointed to fill this position. And I think what we have at the district right now is excellent and I look forward to learning and working. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. With that, if you could rise, if you're able to, and please join me with the pledge allegiance. Thank you. Our next item is the Student Council Representatives. Are they here this evening? Ryan and Emma, welcome.
The end one or the podium probably.
All right, good evening, everyone. After the Thanksgiving break, Student Council will be back in action with a number of holiday events. First, we will be hosting our annual holiday decorating at Columbia on December 1st. So that's going to be a big event for us. And the following Saturday, December 4th, is when we will be doing our bell ringing for Salvation Army. From 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, we will be outside Walmart caroling and collecting donations in honor of a Columbia student named Chris Bascom, who passed away in an accident in 2003.
This year, Student Council voted to purchase gifts and necessities for two families in need. So we will be doing all of our shopping on December 4th. We will also be hosting a Student Health Awareness Week in December to meet all of our students' needs. And finally, we will be partnering with the Ethnic Coalition at Columbia to support families in shelters. And we will have more on that for you in coming weeks.
And we would also like to congratulate our boys varsity volleyball team on their victory, on their victory at the Regionals game on Friday. And as a school, we are very excited to support them at their game on Saturday. Thank you very much.
So Ryan, before you leave, you may notice the students have these wonderful blue shirts from the presentation. And I heard you're an all Green Meadow alumni and as Student Council President, I would like to honor you with a shirt.
Thank you. I must admit, I did ask for one at the ceremony the other week, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, thank you, Emma and Ryan. And with that, we'll move to the next item is the minutes. Any revisions, corrections on the minutes, board members? Board member is not present at the meeting, Ms. Kamerski and Ms. Curtin. We still have a quorum, so I need a motion to approve the minutes. John, second. Joanne, all those in favor? All those abstaining? Approved. Next item is the Board Forum for Jennifer's benefit. We typically go around the board table. And if there's any comments you want to make regarding what's happening in the community or just anything in general about the board agenda, it's an opportunity to do that. I'll start with my, on my right, with Joanne.
Just want to say it's great to be back in the schools. Happy to see the kids and congratulations to Green Meadow on their recent award.
Thank you, Joanne. Kathleen?
She covered it.
She told you her thunder. Jennifer, anything? Okay, yep. Mark, good. John?
Just a quick comment. Again, it's great to see people again instead of empty rooms and Zoom meetings. But we took a tour of the building today to see the Capitol project that actually is in progress and moving forward. And it's great to see the space revamped and reutilized in a much more efficient way. And as I was touring the building, I was thinking, we're always thanking a lot of people all the time. But one guy that always flies under the radar, and I think he likes it that way, is Paul Bickel, the head of our facilities. He is not only in charge of this building, but all the, all the facilities and people. So Paul, to you, thank you for overseeing these projects for the kids and putting it together, spending our money wisely. And could you please bring this back to your staff that we do really appreciate the hard work that they do, not only for the projects, but every day to keep these buildings in shape and keeping them safe for the kids. So again, thank you and thanks to your team.
Thank you, Paul. Michelle?
I just wanted to congratulate everybody here and thank them for bringing their kids today so we can have a wonderful little concert from them. Most of you know that I've been here. My kids went through the school for about 13 or 14 years. So I'm really excited to be here on the celebration of the Blue Ribbon School. I want to thank all the teachers, the aides, the everybody. Where is it? The principal, everybody, to make sure that you guys know how appreciative our community is for all the work you put into this and for the recognition what this means is an amazing honor that we don't see often and we are so appreciative for all that you do to earn them.
Thank you, Michelle. Cheryl? So as John said, one of the things that the board always has done in the past is come to the, to the schools to see the excitement, to see our students, see the things that they're doing, see the classrooms if we can get a chance. And to be here, and it was a goal to, to get back out there, even with the restrictions, the distancing, the spacing, this is what it's all about for us. And I really, you know, we've thanked a lot of people here. I want to thank your parents because this is your school, all right? This is, you know, you send your, your children here. We educate your children here, but it's a community and you're the community. And we represent your interests. But again, this is your school. This is your community. It's our district and together, through all the things that we do here, we're just doing things for our children to make things better, provide them the opportunities that they can hopefully as adults take advantage of. And I really appreciate all the things that you do as parents with our children and also, of course, the staff and everything they do. So it's a much appreciated, thank you. With that, we will move to our, our public forum. Resident students, employees and business representatives of the East Greenbush Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operations of the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to existing concerns in the public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact the individual in the near future. Those persons wishing to address the board would be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the visitors' forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may be considered defamatory or stigmatizing or prohibited are declared out of order and any comments shall be limited to five minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address the board this time? Okay. Seeing none, we will then move to the reports and presentations of the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Buno. We have to move to, hopefully the lights will come back.
So we're a very efficient district here, energy efficient, so we want to make sure that.
I'm very proud to turn the program over to Mr. Garab, our principal here at Green Meadow and our students to highlight what's been occurring over the last several weeks to celebrate and commemorate the recognition of the U.S. Department of Education of Green Meadow Elementary School as a National Blue Ribbon School of Excellence. Mr. Garab?
Thank you, Mr. Simons. Welcome, President Buno and the members of our Board of Education. Congratulations, Mrs. O'Brien, on your appointment and welcome to Green Meadow. So you picked a great first meeting for your official one. I'm told it can be a little hard to hear in the back, so Mrs. Scolacci told me to talk loud. So hopefully you can hear me. Thank you to the staff members that I have here this evening. I really appreciate you coming. But an extra special thanks to Mr. Perez and some members of our fifth grade chorus. Thank you very much. Let's give these little kiddos a round of applause. I, I would have loved to have the entire fifth grade chorus, but we're trying to do this in a safe manner and stay socially distanced. So I hope everybody understands that. We do have a, a presentation here for you this evening. What we're going to do is talk a little bit about the Blue Ribbon School application process and some of the ways we have celebrated. But I'd like to first just really say, this is really truly a team effort. And this award doesn't just belong to Green Meadow. It really belongs to the entire community and I look at it really as a district award. We have just a phenomenal staff here at Green Meadow. Whether you're talking teachers, custodians, teaching assistants, office assistants. We have an extremely supportive central administration and Board of Education. But we also have a very cohesive staff and faculty district wide. And over the last several years, I think we have really been working much more in sync. And this is proof of the results. You know, the elementary principals, we speak on nearly a daily basis. We communicate with the middle school, the high school. So I thank everyone, including my colleagues and the entire community for their support. We couldn't be more excited. Let me tell you a little bit about the application process. So the National Blue Ribbon Schools program is administered by the U.S. Department of Education. It started in 1982. It honors both private and public schools whose, where the students attain and maintain high academic goals. This year, there were 302 public schools recognized and 23 non-public schools recognized. The U.S. Department of Education invites each chief state school officer to nominate the public schools. In this state, that would be the Commissioner of Education, Betty Rosa. Private schools are nominated by the Council for American Private Education. And the number of applicants from each state is based on the number of K-12 students and the number of schools. So for example, New York gets 19 nominations. We were one of 19. California gets the most, they get 28 nominations. Eligibility criteria, it can be nominated under two different areas. And you don't ask to be nominated, you're invited. One is exemplary, high performing schools. Second category is exemplary achievement in closing the gaps. We were nominated as an exemplary, high performing school based on our 2018-19 testing data. If you recall, in 2020, there was no state test administered due to the coronavirus. We scored in the whole school category in the top 15% in the state. There are some other categories, some subgroups that, that enlist everyone, but this is the category that we were nominated under. Now that kind of gets you to the table. This doesn't get you the, get you the award. After you're nominated, you have to complete the application process. We were notified on December 16th, 2020, of our nomination. If you recall, that was really at the, the surge in COVID-19. Cases were going up. Students were stressed, families were stressed. Teachers, staff members were stressed. Everybody was really trying to do their best to just hold it together and do the best that we could do for the kids. I got the email, I'm going to be 100% honest. I almost thought it was junk mail and deleted it. Luckily, that didn't happen. And I, and I realized we were nominated, I was pretty excited. Immediately called the Assistant Superintendent Jim McQ and Mr. Simons to let them know of our nomination. It was nice to get some, some good news like that. And then I called, not an emergency, but an unannounced staff meeting at the end of the day. And I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, this might have been a Friday. Nobody wants to go to a staff meeting, even if it's virtual at 3:30 on a Friday. But I, we had a quick five, 10 minute staff meeting to share the good news with the faculty here. But we were told to keep it under wraps by the U.S. Department of Education. We were one of 325 schools nationwide nominated and again, one of 19 in New York State. The application process was extremely rigorous. First thing I did was put together a team. And I honestly wasn't sure, am I going to get a lot of volunteers? People are stressed to the max. We put it out, we had so many people volunteer. We ended up with a committee, a writing team of about 15 people. Teachers, teaching assistants, our PTO president, Nicole, Chrissanda Nicole is, you hear, right here, and I know she doesn't like when I do this, but she was a huge help. Central office staff, amazing support from every one of them. And our Board of Education. So we really appreciate that. You can look at the entire application online. There were narratives, there was a lot of data reporting. They looked at a whole bunch of different demographic data, district data, school data, population by grade, our racial, ethnic composition, turnover, mobility rate, special education programs, our staffing, our attendance rates. And then we had to write a lot about curriculum and instruction. Reading, ELA, mathematics, science, social studies, academic supports, PE, health, other curriculum areas. And we divided this up amongst the writing team. And the hard part was keeping it short enough. Because once you get into this, you realize how much we do and what a good job we, meaning the entire district, does. But they limit you to a certain number of words per section. Not only academics, huge section about school climate and culture. I had the good fortune of being involved in this same process 10 years ago when I taught at Red Mill School. I was actually completing my administrative internship. And by being involved in that process, I can tell you, it's not just the same thing 10 years later. There were very specific questions related to COVID-19, how we supported our students, how we connected with the community, how we engaged with families. So that it wasn't just the same old thing. It definitely changes each year. School leadership, culturally responsive teaching and learning, very current topics. General timeline, we are nominated December 2020. New York State Education Department, once we accepted the nomination, notifies the U.S. Education Department. Green Meadow at that point is formally nominated. Late December, kind of the nuts and bolts start. We're issued a password, the online application process begins. January, February, we really start getting into the meat and potatoes of writing the application. That continued through March. April, we submit it. Summer 2020, we had opportunities for revision. Luckily, we were not notified by the Department of Education that we had to make any. So what we submitted on the first time was successful. Summer 2021, we had to make AYP, Adequate Yearly Progress, which we did. And then it's wait and you hope you get it. And as I tell the kids here and the staff here, we didn't win this, we earned it. And we were notified in the fall that we were successful. And the Secretary of Education, Miguel Cardona, announced the winners. And if you recall, there was a fair amount of publicity here. Mark Adam did an amazing job with press releases, reaching out to our elected officials. If you get a chance later during the break, the awards are listed up here, some proclamations. Here's the official award that we accepted in Washington. And then we got some media coverage and we have just a couple of those interviews to show you. And then the fun part started, the party planning. And we met weekly. We had a team of probably again, about 15 to 20 people. We'd meet here weekly, socially distanced in the gym. Mark Adam and Linda Wager would come every week and we wanted to plan an in-person celebration. And we planned the outdoor celebration, which Michelle Ecker is going to talk a little bit about. And then after the celebration, we had the good fortune of going to Washington DC. I would have loved to have been able to bring the entire faculty and staff. You're limited to who you can bring. We were able to bring two teachers. Every superintendent got an invite. We're glad that Mr. Simons joined us. Mrs. Ecker and Mrs. Romer, who could not be here this evening due to a prior family commitment. But Michelle is going to talk a little bit about Washington DC.
Thank you, Mr. Garab. So I'm Michelle Ecker. I'm a fourth grade teacher here at Green Meadow. And it has been such an honor to be a part of this whole process. I was on the committee, the initial committee. I was also on the final writing committee and I'm going to thank Mrs. Chrissanda. I think your English skills are why we didn't have any corrections when we submitted it. But, and then we did a lot of planning for the different events and then it was able to culminate for us down in Washington a few weeks ago. I want to say just a huge thank you to Mr. Simons and the board for supporting our trip down to Washington. It was awesome, not going to lie. It was really, really awesome to go there. There were 45 states represented at the ceremony. We met people from Tennessee, Arizona, Colorado. And in talking to people, you realize how special Green Meadow really is. Some of these people, the principal did everything and didn't include any of the staff or parents or kids. And when we were talking about how we did it, they were like, what? And I was like, what do you mean? That's what we do. This is Green Meadow, we are a family. So that was pretty cool to see that not everybody is like Green Meadow and East Greenbush. The other really cool thing is we have kept in touch with some of those other schools and are hoping to do like some sort of pen pal activity or something to kind of carry on the relationships that were fostered. But it was super cool, the actual award ceremony. I'm not going to lie, it was long, but they did play music and we got to dance. But it was, it was really cool to see Green Meadow. It was live, so I know there are kiddos that sat here that day and were able to jump right on and watch it as we got it. I also will tell you, my mom was an educator for 30 years. She lives in Florida. I texted her, Mom, jump on, we're going now. And she got to watch us do it. So it was pretty cool to have the whole ceremony take place. So yeah, it was cool. I, it was fun. So you want this back? All right.
Thank you, Mrs. Ecker. And again, thank you to the, the entire board and the central office for allowing that to happen and, and for your support. We're not going to share all of the media coverage, but it was in the Times Union, a whole bunch of different websites. There were a couple of interviews that we'll share. The first one we're going to play here is from Channel 10. They covered our outdoor celebration. Peter's going to cue that up. If you can't see, you're welcome to get up where you can see the screen.
Best working schools in the country. Green Meadow Elementary School in East Greenbush recognized as a 2021 Blue Ribbon School. The award affirms the hard work of educators, families and communities in creating a safe and welcoming school where students master challenging and engaging content.
This was just absolutely fantastic. You know, the past year and a half, very challenging for everyone dealing, for everyone dealing with COVID-19, especially the school system. And to receive this honor and to be able to have this type of event in person, outdoors, together for such a positive reason is great. It's good for our school and it's great for the community and we couldn't be happier.
Challenging year is the least you can say about it. Congratulations to them. Green Meadow, one of only 325 schools in the country, including one of 19 schools in New York, to receive the 2021 National Blue Ribbon School Award.
An appropriate song playing in the background too. It was hard to see, but we had food trucks, we had a magician, actually Chris Levar. She taught here last year, this year he teaches at Bell Top. We had a balloon artist. We had a DJ. Fireworks that were just absolutely incredible. And quite a few elected officials that were here to honor us. This interview is, is really good, features a, a lot of kids. Also Mrs. Romer and Mrs. Coucher, who's here with us this evening.
Many schools struggled to make it through a tough year during the pandemic. A number of schools in our region are being nationally recognized as Blue Ribbon High Performing Schools. Our Sarah Revest takes us to Green Meadow Elementary School to see how that school won this honor.
Each morning at Green Meadow Elementary School, students start the day with the morning news broadcast.
It's a wonderful day at Green Meadow. Good morning and welcome to GMTV.
On this particular morning.
I'm sure by now you've all heard the exciting news.
They've got something major to celebrate.
Green Meadow has been chosen as a National Blue Ribbon School.
That's right. The elementary school is being recognized as one of the nation's top performing schools. And this very broadcast is one of the reasons they stood out.
They helped make it just like, just a normal year, as normal as it could possibly be, even with all the restrictions.
It's a great feat for a year most educators consider the most difficult in their entire careers. So how does a school persevere during a pandemic?
Good morning, everyone.
In addition to running the broadcast club, Mrs. Coucher is also a fourth grade teacher.
We wanted to find a way to keep the school and students connected.
So GMTV didn't quit production during the shutdown. Instead, it just went online so kids could watch from home and start their day the way they're used to.
We incorporated a lot of the staff.
Keep reading, Green Meadow.
A lot of the students. And we just made it a fun way to see each other's faces. Everybody persevered the best they could. Returning this year to an in-person model is so exciting for us.
Seeing our students do so well is extra special for Mrs. Coucher. She's a Green Meadow graduate herself.
I keep that hung up in my classroom, just as a reminder that, you know, somebody who was in fourth grade and said, when I grow up, I want to be a teacher. You can, you can make your dreams come true.
Just like Mrs. Coucher, Principal Daniel Garab is an East Greenbush Schools alum.
This could not have come at a better time. This has certainly been a very challenging period in education.
Hi, Mrs. Romer. Hi, friends.
Principal Garab took us to Mrs. Romer's first grade classroom. We're confident students have no doubt as to why their school community deserves the award.
We worked hard and we were kind.
Because the families and the teachers worked hard.
Who else made this a Blue Ribbon School? The students.
Because we all do quality work.
With a school motto of it's all in the attitude, Green Meadow is one of just 19 New York schools to win 2021's award.
It is just exciting in our reality to be back together five days a week. That is the most exciting thing. I think the children really feel that excitement and to know that we're getting this honor has just made it even better.
For Spectrum News, I'm Sarah Revest.
So that was great. And I was so proud of the, the kids. It's okay, I see the kids clapping over there. You can clap. You can clap. Kids did a fantastic job there being interviewed. And it really is special, you know, having gone through the school system here since kindergarten, having the good fortune to work here and raise a, raise a family. I really couldn't be, couldn't be prouder of the entire community. And Mrs. Kuchay, thank you so much for all you do with GMTV and letting us in there and in your classroom and, and all that you do. So thank you very much. Part of our outdoor celebration, you guys ready? Our students sang the song, and I want to give credit where credit's due, "Green Meadows Going Blue." This song was originally written by Jackie Nagy, the music teacher at Red Mill Elementary School. When they received the award, and they sang, "Red Mill's Going Blue." And when it was announced that we received this award, in the spirit of collaboration and cooperation, Mrs. Nagy reached out to Mrs. Perez, Mr. Perez, and offered the use of our song. And she also came the night of our celebration and played the keyboard. So I thanked her that night, but Mrs. Scolacci, if you could please tell Mrs. Nagy, we really appreciate it. Now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Perez.
All right. Good, am I on? All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm pleased to announce some select students from our fifth grade chorus. They will be singing "Green Meadows Going Blue." Now, this year hasn't really been the typical chorus year for them. And a matter of fact, these guys, this is actually their first year doing a full year of chorus, where most years they would already have a full year under their belt. So it's a very new experience to them. And I just want to give a shout out to them and tell them they are doing a phenomenal job and keep up the hard work. Okay, so without further ado, this is "Green Meadows Going Blue."
You guys were great. Absolutely great. Thank you so much. We're going to wrap things up. Mrs. Kuchay put together a phenomenal video that highlights some of the ways that we have celebrated our award. Starting with our very first ever pep rally at Green Meadow Elementary School, followed by our community celebration, and then our trip to Washington DC. And I saved this for last because I know the kids wanted, would like to see it. And I think we should show this to the, to the whole school. Mrs. Kuchay, thank you so much for all your hard work and your talents. Mr. Goodwin.
To great colleagues. This is Romer, Mrs. Ecker.
Morning.
Morning.
And we just got back late Friday evening from Washington DC, where we flew down along with our superintendent of schools, Mr. Simons, to accept the National Blue Ribbon School Award. So here's the plaque, and I'll put it up close here. This is the seal of the US Department of Education. And on the bottom here, it says, "In recognition of Green Meadow Elementary School, Castleton-on-Hudson, New York, exemplary high-performing National Blue Ribbon School Award. 2021, Michael Cardona."
So it was super exciting and super fun, guys. We got to meet teachers and principals and superintendents from all across the United States. I think they said forty-five states were, were there at this celebration. I think the best part was maybe the music that was playing. Yes, three hundred twenty-five schools on the award, and it was a pretty long ceremony. So they had some really good music playing. We got to do a little dancing. They did. So it was really pretty cool. Thanks for all your hard work, Green Meadow. Good job.
Way to go.
That was, that was great. Just want to thank our PTO once more, led by Nicole Chisanda, not only with the application writing process, but their support. They donated the fireworks that evening. Also, a shout out to our middle school and our high school, Mrs. Barker and Mr. Harkin. If you saw in the, the video there, anytime we have an event here, the, their student councils come down. You saw the cheerleaders. So we really appreciate the support that you guys give to us as well. That's all we have for this evening. Thank you very much. And I'll turn it over to President Buno.
Yeah, I'd just like to give one more round of applause to the, the kids and then Mr. Garab and the team here. So wonderful job. Thank you so much. That was, it was a great evening. It was, I was honored to be part of it, and I want to thank everyone again. So with that, we will, I guess the kids, you can go home, moms and dads and parents and lovers here can, can head out. Unless you want to stay for the meeting, you're welcome to stay. We have a lot of exciting business ahead of us if you want to, to listen in and contribute. So, so we'll, we'll take a minute while you guys can disperse and we'll go from there. Well, thank you for coming out this evening and celebrating with us. We appreciate it. Thank you. So the, the next item on our agenda is attendance, student attendance, Mike. Mr. Harkin from the Columbia High School is going to present that.
I'm deeply disappointed they didn't want to stay to hear about the attendance at the high school, but these are awfully big shoes to fill. But thank you, everybody, for having me this evening. Mr. Simons asked me to take a look at our attendance numbers, and I compiled the report. I think it's important to mention that under our central administration and the Board of Education, the supports that we've added this year have really had an impact on our attendance. We meet every Tuesday morning at eight fifteen. Myself, the three principals in the building, head of guidance, our social workers, our school psychologists. And in years past, we would mention a name. We go through every student in the, in the school that adds, adds an absence in that one week period. So even if one child is out for one day, they go on the list. And we go through the list every, every Tuesday. With the additional staff and supports we had this year, and it really, that, that third social worker has allowed our, all of our social workers to have connection with every one of these kids. You can, you can ask any kid on that list where it is, and then one of them gives me an answer immediately, which is something that we couldn't do last year or the years previous. It may take us a little while to track them down or see what's going on. And then we've been started inviting Merrill Tremblay, the district wide one. She's been coming now for the last month. And we really have able to make home visits, make these connections, let families know that we're not just here for one home visit, and then we'll see you next month. We are on top of these parents and these kids every single week. So we're really excited to see some of the improvements that we've had this year. It's been really exciting. And I think that the, the community is starting to understand the importance of getting the school on time as well. Our lates are down. We have a new system at the front door. We have the kids scanning with their, with their IDs. They don't like it. There's a lot of kids have complained about having to wait in line to scan in. The solution is to come to school on time. So we've really seen a huge number of students arriving on time because they want to get to the building. They want to get there. It's also made possible by having the day start five minutes earlier. We don't have the transition from guide room to first period. They go to their, their academic assistants and they stay there. It has also freed up the principals. Now that we don't have a guide room, we are out in the halls. I stand at the front door every day and start the countdown for fifteen seconds. I tell them all the time, make an athletic move, get in the building. We'll, we'll cut you some slack. You should see them come sprinting up the stairs. It's encouraging to see the kids arriving on time. But for this year especially, we've seen some improvement. When we printed this report, we had thirty-eight days of school. So if you go to the second page, you have to look at it from the point that if anyone had three point eight, which is four absences, they're considered chronically tardy for their chronically absent for the year. So this is a little bit skewed, but we are seeing improvement. But it also gives us some numbers. I mean, students rate with over twenty percent, you know, they're at six. They're really in danger of getting to that eighteen before the year's over. So those are the students that we've targeted, and we look at, we have interventions in place. We've also examined how we take attendance. Some of the things that we realized that we were making errors in is we're over reporting stuff. A college visit is not a loss of academic instruction. It's a, it's an extension of academic instruction. We had been marking that as an absence. We've, we've corrected that. We've also looked at our family bereavement, hospitalization, and home instruction. In years past, when a student was out, if they didn't connect with a tutor, they didn't get to work. But now that we've had the pandemic, we have Google Classroom. We have online learning. If a student is out for a five-day family bereavement, they're doing all the work on Google Classroom. We offer a tutor when they come back. The definition of chronically absent is loss of instructional time. Yes, they were not in front of a teacher, but they did all the work that's required of them. So therefore, we're, we're, we don't feel that that is an absence. So what we did this quarter is, the first quarter ended two Fridays ago. The principals went through every student that was hospitalized, family bereavement, or home instruction, reviewed their grades, review what they completed on Google Classroom. If all their assignments were turned in and they passed all their classes, those absences were changed back to apps, not, uh, home instruction present, home hospitalization present, and then we changed the family bereavement to present. So we, we're not hiding anything. We're not trying to be deceitful. But with what we've learned from the pandemic, one of the positives is that we have Google Classroom. It allows us to have kids do work when they're out of school. When these kids are also out, if you're out, for example, for a five-day bereavement, we get it that you don't get that instruction. So when they come back, we also offer them five hours of tutoring. So if, if a child is out for five days, they went to their grandparents' funeral out of town, they did the work, when they come back, we remind them that we have five hours of tutoring for you. And a lot of times they take us up on that. The other thing that we're seeing this year, which is really great that we have the tutoring, we'll be starting our, our mandatory tutoring for our students that have failed for the first quarter right after break. But one of the other things that Mr. Simons has allowed us to do is offer tutoring for students who are home waiting for a test that are over three days. So we know how hard it is to get a PCR test. It's very stressful to some of our, our students who really enjoy coming to school and doing well academically. It's, it's a very stressful thing. They get nervous. They're taking high-level classes, they're taking college-level classes. It's really our parents that comforts them to know that they're allowed to get that tutoring. You missed three days, we'll give you three hours. They come back, a lot of times they take it, take us up in their higher-level math classes, their higher-level science classes, and allow them to remediate. So we're seeing a lot of positive things. I want to thank everyone for the support that we've gotten from this group in this room. Adding the extra social workers has made a huge... Adding this extra social workers has made a huge impact. I can't tell you how, it's just rewarding when I say, say a student's hand, they say, oh, nope, she had a tonsillectomy, she's out. That person has mono, they went to vacation to visit their grandmother in Pennsylvania. We know where everyone is and what everyone's doing, so it's really made an impact. So if they have any questions for me about that. Yeah. It's a huge difference, yeah.
Wonderful, so thank you.
And the parents are even like, our social workers give out their cell phones, which I, I think is remarkable that they do that. And parents will text them and say, we're quarantined again, or we might, we were exposed at Stewart's on Thursday and we'll be back. We're just waiting for our PCR, so we know where they are and we know when they're back. And if they're not back in that two days, then we start to market excuse, we, we go out and make a visit. So it's, it's really been helpful. The connection is a huge key. All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harkin, appreciate it. The next item on the agenda is an update on the capital project.
Yes, I asked Paul Bickel at the request of the board, we did have a tour prior to the meeting, but just to give a general overview of the status of their current capital project. That project, as a reminder, was approved in 2017. There are multiple phases to it. It was a $39.7 million project approved by the community by a super majority. Wow.
I'm sorry, some of you were able to join us on the tour just before the board meeting, so thank you for that. I apologize for this annoying noise in here. We were actually just up on the roof trying to figure it out and it seems to be a light ballast or something. So just another thing to add to the daily menu, but anyway, so this, this particular bond project was comprised of three different phases. Two of the phases have been substantially complete at this point. Phase one was originally the, the fire systems and also the informa cast system and a vigilon, different camera systems throughout the building. So that was like a district wide phase of the project. Phase two got a lot more involved in actual, the mechanics of the buildings and taking it behind. And what you're going to see, if you have this one document in front of you, phase two of the 2017 capital project, if you want to follow down with me, recurring theme here is replacement of bathrooms, mostly in classrooms, making them ADA compliant and also hallway bathrooms, turning them into ADA compliant and updating them. A big driving theme behind this originally was the lead and water issues. So it kind of made a lot of sense to hit all the topics at once. There's a definitely a large expense for the district, but it's paying off not only from the ability to have outlets that are putting out lower lead ratings than before, but also to have the increased accessibility for our handicap class, students. So it started off phase two in the spring of last year with the replacement of the golf chiller unit. Into the summer, we got it into Green Meadow and we started replacing some of the bathrooms in the front halls here in the classroom wings, saving the larger portion of it we just showed for, for this past summer. Refinishing of the gym floor was one of the large items on the list. As you can see, we've got a beautiful new floor here. Each school was able to pick their own design that kind of went with the theme of the school. So I thought that was very nice. A lot of daylighting provisions went into place and a lot of this stuff will become repetitive themes throughout all the buildings as we go on. We did replace a hot water tank here at Green Meadow, only one was needed. The other one had been replaced not too long ago. And some other duct work and exterior lighting work. At Red Mill, last summer was a big summer for group bathroom replacement there. Some of you may recall, we did a tour of that just after the summer last year and went through a bunch of those group bathrooms. I'm sticking just with the items that happened last summer, I'm just kind of, kind of breeze through them. We did some re-roofing at Green Meadow, also similar floor treatment done in the gymnasium. They were also allowed to pick their own theme, which was nice. Some ramp construction on the back of the building, different paving done in the front of the building, complete new utility and transformer work. So basically, a whole new electrical system was ran in from the poles to the building, making it a lot more reliable than the past system. Two new hot water heaters were installed in that building and also a lot of lighting on the exterior. So a lot of things that were in here were just major issues from previous underlying conditions. Hot water heaters had been failing. As we know, we had a, we had to have an emergency project at the high school shortly after I started. And also we had already had a failed hot water heater at Goff before I started. And, and then the second one failed shortly after Columbia. So it was a good thing to get a lot of these out of the way. Last summer at Goff, there was some bathroom repairs and replacements. The front, the front lounge, teacher lounge was turned into two bathrooms for staff and then two additional gender neutral bathrooms that face the hallway. Other bathrooms in the front wing were redone. And again, continuing on with the same theme of daylight, daylighting controls and exterior lighting on the building. The transportation center, the rear parking lot was completely repaved. It was in a state of disrepair. And one thing that was added that was not originally on the list was to improve the drainage around that. For those of you that had been over there, that back corner was actually floating, the pavement, there was so much water. So it made sense to do it at this time and I can say it's made a remarkable improvement. It's kind of dried that swampy area out there and the pavement's holding up great now. So well worth the extra investment there. The buildings in ground shop received a whole new paved lot. And we also added in a small loop, which made it easier for the, the truck and trailer that pulls the mower around the district park each night and looked better than it parked on the lawn when you pulled in there. So items that were just finished this last summer. Green Meadow, we, as I talked about, we did 17 bathrooms here in the back wing, including new cubbies and new casework. We also did a new transformer and power into this building. Red Mill, the, the front section of the building, the toilet rooms and the classrooms were, were replaced, also ADA compliant. And a lot, a lot of the fixtures throughout there were placed as well as HVAC unit on the, that had failed on the office roof, the main office roof. Goff had quite a bit more work done. The, the back wing bathrooms were, had all new plumbing fixtures put in on, on the top and bottom floors. The second floor center section, anyone that got to visit the home and career section is dramatically changed now with center aisles and sent separate areas for cooking and doing different things. And that's handicap accessible now too, which is nice. The technology suites had a major renovation. We added a couple extra things there. It originally called for just concrete floors. We decided to have those floors polished and shined, almost like a Home Depot type floor to give it an extra finish look. Mr. Goodwin also added in some, some new view sonic boards, which really kind of makes it for a pretty incredible modern workspace for the students. There was a, one of the biggest things you notice when you pull into Goff is the front parking lot. The, the, much anticipated in some ways and not anticipated in other ways. But we actually put a, a sidewalk down the entire center there and fenced it off completely. So there's only one entry point into the school directly in front of the school. Everybody wasn't quite sure how it worked, but I can report back to you that it's been working great. Everybody seems to be really happy with it. So I think it's a huge improvement as far as safety goes. Kids don't have that opportunity to run between buses, same with student, with staff and parents. I know just from talking to Mark and Mary Ann in the past that that was a major problem. And I know there were some incidences there. So this seems to have rectified it and it just makes for a better flow overall over there. So we're real happy with how that came out. And also Goff is getting some exterior lighting. So that basically concludes phase two. All the major things are done. That was a, that was a two summer project. And right now we're just on punch list items, just trying to finish it out, close it out and be able to get it to SCD to start getting our reimbursement for that. Phase three of the project started this past summer also alongside of this. So phase two involved Goff Red Mill and Green Meadow. Phase three involved the other four schools. So this past summer, actually all seven schools were under construction. So it was quite challenging, to say the least. We ran into several problems with, with manpower shortages that put us behind the eight wall right from the start and it made it very challenging. Luckily, we have a great group of construction workers working for the district through Santa Ruben that stepped in and really helped with that management piece to get us to the point where we, you know, were able to open school. I know there was a little bit of a challenge in some areas, but when it came right down to it, the rooms were functional on the first day of school and that is a tribute to everybody that really put in the, the long hours and hard work to get that done. So this past summer at Bell Top, the, we started us working on the left corridor, the bathrooms in those classrooms, same theme throughout the district, ADA compliance, adding cubbies and adding the casework. We also replaced the two front bathrooms. They were changed to single use bathrooms to make them ADA compliant. Underneath the front floor in Bell Top, it's an older school. I know you, mostly you have been in there and kind of walked down ramps both, both sides. And that floor up in the front had very minimal support under it. It actually was settling, creaking, cracking and blowing tiles off the floor. So a whole new foundation system was put underneath that floor this past summer and it was resupplied. Next summer, they're going to actually redo the flooring in that area and down the ramps to the end. So that'll be the finished product. Again, more daylight provisions, exterior lighting. There was a tank in the basement. It was an old water tank that was abandoned and as all you know, Bell Top has minimal storage space. So we were able to get that tank out of there and gain a little bit of storage space in doing so. The lower parking lot was completely removed right down to the subsoil and built back up, including a retaining wall, which looks beautiful. If you get a chance, take a look at it. At Citizens today, we had some items that we had planned in the project, which were bathrooms. This project, this phase is actually being split between two different summers also. So this will continue on next summer. We got as many of the bathrooms as we thought we could handle this summer out of the way, mostly group bathrooms. But we also finished the CTAP bathroom. That became a unique bathroom arrangement. It was originally a group bathroom, but CTAP moved to that building about partially, partially through the design of this project. So with the work of Mark, with the help of March Associates, we were able to redesign that. And it's actually one from one group bathroom into three different neutral, gender neutral bathrooms internally. So it's pretty neat. I think at some point, we'll probably be making our way around all the schools, so we'll be, we can tour that. A big thing that had to be pushed into this project and unfortunately was not part of the original project was the roof repairs around the perimeter of Janay. The, we, we had some ceilings come down and stairwells and it was determined that the flashing up on the roof, on the parapet area, they call it, which surrounds was allowing water in. So fortunately, we were able to get that into the project. It hadn't been, quite been submitted to SCD yet at that point. So we were able to get that adjusted and in. And I'm happy to say that that part of the project actually got completed this past summer and just, they went into the, the start of the school year a little bit, but that's completed and now safe. We still have some additional work that's going to be happening. As far as Maceory rebuilds and things like that on the buildings, they are going to be doing some hot water heaters, replacements at Janay and the district administration wing had old failing HVAC units on the roof. Those were replaced. So they were approximately 20 to 25 years. One of them actually failed literally weeks before it was due for replacement, so. DP Sutherland got a complete new roof on the front, the front part of the building. It's actually a synthetic roof. So very nice looking and the roofing supplies were in high demand. And they just had enough to pull it off at that building to get that roof done this past summer. Just prior to that, high winds had torn off two corners of that roof. So it couldn't have come at a better time. So we're happy to say that that roof is safely intact at this point. In, internally in DP Sutherland, two of the group bathrooms in the front hallways were replaced as well. Columbia, the front stairs got replaced, a new hot water heater went in and the lower west student parking lot and sidewalks were, were redone. At this point, this is a project that's currently underway. The two chillers are being rebuilt. We waited till the end of the summer to be able to do that. One of them is the small chillers on, underway right now and then we'll be doing the large chiller shortly after. So the next couple items are things that we're looking forward to do next summer. Again, this is some of the, the items that we're also selectively trying to sneak in throughout the school year where we can, just to try to avoid the shortfalls that we could run into again with having to have manpower issues and run into. have manpower issues and run into the beginning of the school year. So at Bell Top, there are a bunch of bath, there are a bunch of classrooms in the right hall. That'll be the same treatment with new bathrooms. They're going to be doing some stair guard, guardrails. Right now they're not compliant, so they actually have to make the spacing between those a lot narrower. They'll be re-roofing some older sections of the roof there. And that gym floor will also get refinished. At Janay, more corridor bathrooms will be under construction. We're actually going to start construction of two new bathrooms that are going to be located down by the cafeteria. These are going to be single use bathrooms, but they're directly across from the cafeteria. So it'll be a lot easier to monitor students going in and out of there from the cafeteria. Again, that's going to be something we're going to try to do during the school year. All of the windows at Janay are now slated to be replaced. There was a recent bid that added the remainder of the windows. So that building has well over 350, I think it's almost 400 windows that will be replaced starting possibly early spring. It depends on lead times on the windows. There's different, we're going to be repainting the inside of the gym, refinishing the floor there. Again, another common theme and there's going to be some pavement reconstruction around the building. They'll be replacing the hot water heaters in that building as well. And they're also going to be adding, I don't see it noted on here, but a sec, a section of doors upstairs and downstairs at the end of the hall near administration. And that'll keep the possibility of anyone coming out of those administration doors from being able to enter, enter the school. So it's a safety item that is, that we're definitely in need of, especially with the tax office being so close to those doors. Sometimes people don't know what way to exit and they can easily exit into the, into the school without knowing. So security thing. DP Sutherland, again, the same treatment in the back hall bath, new bathrooms in the classrooms, new cobbies, new cabinetry. The front windows will be replaced of the, on the building as well. That was a bid that went out along with the remainder of the Janay windows. And thankfully, there will be some reconstruction of the hill there, which is in dire need of it, as well as the upper parking lot. That gym floor again will be refinished. And just in closing, Columbia High School, the canopies are finally going to be enclosed underneath to stop with the bird issues we have up there. We're also adding some new LED lighting up underneath them. The gym divider curtains are going to be replaced. The security vestibule there is undersized and tough to fit a lot of people in. So we're going to be widening that. The synthetic turf is also going to be replaced as well as the track surface and any drainage that's needed there. Right now, the lights are actually, the light poles are actually being set as we speak. A couple of them have already gone in. Unfortunately, because of the rainy conditions, they're only going to be able to put two in that they're able to access off the pavement. They're going to wait till the ground freezes to do the other two. So they'll be back to do that. Next summer, I get, the turf field also gets a new ticket booth, which is handicap accessible as well. And one last addition is the technology suite in the back is getting an overdo, overhead door added. So sorry, I know it's a long list, but it's a, it's been very productive and we're doing very well with it. So like I say, we're hoping to knock out some items throughout the school year on breaks. Take advantage of, we, we've met with the principals so we can do, you know, whatever's possible during the school year. Hopefully make, make sure we can meet the deadline, the start date in, in September for school. Does anybody have any questions?
Paul, I want to apologize for not keeping you busy enough.
So I do want to iterate what John said. That is an amazing task and list, and it's not a very easy task. So thank you to you and all your staff for helping to manage that for all of our schools. We truly appreciate it. Second of all, I can give you an informal poll because everybody tells me they love the parking lot in the middle school. And they love the fencing. Kismet, by the way, they don't, but all the parents love it. So it looks beautiful there.
Yeah. Everybody was skeptical about it, but it turned out to be.
Well, when we had the temporary fencing, I was like, yeah, please tell them we're not keeping that up.
There was a lot of internal debate among ourselves about.
But it looks, it looks beautiful. I mean, that, and the fencing is gorgeous. So good.
It really is. Anything else?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, Paul.
Sure.
So material costs and availability of, of materials. How's, you know, you mentioned lead times, you know, it's been a difficult.
Yeah.
See how things are right now. How's that increasing costs potentially? And then availability to the timing and the work? What are you hearing?
Well, this past summer, not having manpower almost immediately put us three weeks behind.
Labor shortages are.
Yeah. So we're unfortunately have to anticipate that again for this coming summer. Things don't seem to be changing too much.
Right.
Material costs are still spiraling, spiraling out of control. However, you know, these, these projects are bid. And unfortunately for the contractors, you know, they're going to take that loss on the material side. Decide that we're going to take the loss on is will we get it in time? So if you look in front of, we, we weren't able to do two scheduled roofs over the summer at Goff and at Green Meadow because of a lack of roofing materials. They've slowly been arriving. And if you look in the middle of Green Meadow here and out in front of Goff, there's piles of insulation and rubber roof. And it just didn't make it in time to be able to do it. So we're trying to take advantage of this time to stockpile everything we can. But with material shortages, it, it's challenging. So it was definitely a learning experience this past summer. And we're going to try to take these next couple of months leading into the summer to make sure we're as well prepared as we possibly can be.
The one thing, of course, I know was Columbia High School, the modification to enlarge this vestibule. We did, we only did that after a while ago, right?
Yeah.
Why, why did that, why do we have to make it bigger all of a sudden?
Yeah, that was a, that was actually a concern of those working. Yep. I didn't want to mention it, but. Yeah.
Original design, I mean, all the schools got vestibules that were hardened and.
Yeah. And they're all a very good size, except for Columbia.
Yeah, I mean, I don't understand how that happened.
So we, this was again, something that happened part of the way through the project. It wasn't something that initially.
No, I agree. It's needed. It's just, it's just like, you know, you spent all that money on a vestibule and all of a sudden, you know, it things like four feet wide.
Exactly.
Expand it to what?
Yeah. Luckily, there's not a huge expense there. We're literally just taking out the wall and kicking it over another eight feet to between two more existing doors.
Good. Okay.
So it's, it's, it's a small expense, but it's going to be a big improvement.
I mean, yeah, it's definitely needed.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. And then at some point, Linda, I would ask that we see kind of where we are with terms of the costs and things like that.
Okay. In light of all of these delays too, you know, the state aid becomes an issue. On phase one, I had to file an early start aid request form, which was approved. And the, the original plan on phase two was to file the final cost reports in December of this year, which we will not be able to do because, you know, the phase two is not finished at this point. So I will also be filing early start aid request forms on phase two projects so that we can keep the aid going.
Yeah, that's important. Okay.
Just a couple, I don't want to take any more of your time, but just a couple of things that are important for everybody to know. The transportation tank project is underway. Right now, we are in the process of doing contaminated soil removal. It appears that that was pre-existing from all, everybody that has been on site, the engineers. Unfortunately, because we're the owner of the product, we're project, owner of the property, we're stuck with it and we're stuck with cleaning it up at this point. So they are working together. One challenge we are having is the town of East Green Bush is only allowing us to put a certain amount of water into their sewer system. So basically what happens is it goes into these large truck tanks. They're basically tractor trailers and they're called frac tanks. From there, it settles out and then it gets pumped through a special filter to the point to where it's clean enough to where it can go into a city sewer. So the gallons per minute, they're, they're limiting us a little bit on that. So it's slowing down progress, progress on that a little bit. So, yeah, I just wanted to make.
It's a capacity issue probably with the town and the.
What's that?
It's probably a capacity issue with the treatment plan that can only handle someone.
Yeah, yeah. So what we came up with is we're actually pumping the five gallons per minute, but we're pumping it 24 hours a day. So pumping, yeah, just something unforeseen things in this kind of situation. But, you know, we're moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
A lot of work then. Thank you, Paul. I'm sorry, Mark, you got a question? You mean the road construction and all that? Yeah, it was engineering? Yeah. The road and the way we, we're going to cut the hill and everything. Yeah, that was a.
Yes, I do. No.
That was part of the town. Was it kind of a cooperative grant with the town project?
It was a town project, but there were certain, I can't completely recollect what it was, but there were certain issues that in terms of costs within the town scope of the project that they couldn't, couldn't do. It was part of their, when they were doing the sidewalks there.
Yep.
It's something that we would have to pick up as a discussion, either as part of our next capital project or with the town, in combination with the town. But yeah, they couldn't fund it because it wasn't part of their approved funding for what they were doing on that road, as I recall. Yes. Yes. Right. I have been thinking about that since I arrived here and driven around the back and looked at various things I did with the prior director facilities. But I do think it's something that we would have to explore and how we do that. You know, you, you could involve having to have a referendum that involved purchasing other land or buying portions of other people's land in order to make it viable. But it is something that we should look at and study.
Definitely.
Was the changes in the middle school part of the town as well? Or is that our, like the wet field in the back and trying to do something a little bit better for the.
That's within our project.
Okay.
That's within our athletic, athletic study.
Very good. Any other questions? No?
That's it on the capital project and then we have a few discussion items.
Yep. So first discussion item, the ONM vehicle replacement plan. You can present that.
Yeah, just real briefly, I'm going to ask Linda to just give an overview of this. This is preliminary information that we typically annually provide the board regarding replacement schedule for our vehicles within the facilities and grounds department. Final determinations as to whether or not we purchase and replace these vehicles become part of the budget process, which really won't start until later in December. But we would like to give the public and the board a sense of the inventory of the vehicles, the age of the vehicles and what we're thinking about in terms of replacing. And I'll ask Linda to kind of highlight some of the items that may or may not go into the budget, depending on what happens.
Okay, thank you. So in Mr. Bickel's spare time, he did update the maintenance vehicle replacement plan for us. So attached here, you do have a list of our current vehicles in the department. And as you can see, some of them are getting a little bit older. Each year, we do try to replace one vehicle, take one of the older ones out of service and, and replace it with something newer to keep us operational and safe. So for consideration in next year's budget, the main thing that we're looking to replace is the 2006 Dodge Ram pickup truck, which currently has a little over 81,000 miles on it. But it is very rusted and the repairs are becoming costly on that. So we will be looking to replace that with a Ford F-350 extended cab with a plow on it. And then in the next couple of years after that, we will be looking to replace some of the dump trucks with newer Ford F-550 dump trucks with plows on them. And then finally in 25, 26, we'll be looking to purchase a Mercedes Sprinter van, which sounds lovely. And, and that will replace the Ford F-350 that we have from 2015. So this is just a plan. We can look at this as we develop our budget, but we do try to replace one vehicle each year. Additionally, some equipment requests that we will be asked to consider for next year's budget is purchasing a Toro Grand Grounds Master 5900. And this is a very large mower. As you can see, it's also very expensive. So we will, if this is something that we want to consider, we can also consider leasing this, which over five years does turn out to be more expensive, but it's something that we can consider. We're also asked to consider purchasing a Kubota BX 1880 tractor with mower, snow blower and sweeper. So that, that is an item that is about $23,000. So these are all items that we'll look at in our preliminary budget. And then we'll have to decide what we can do and when we can do it. But attached there, as I said, is a current vehicle list. You will notice that there is one GMC dump truck on there from 2004. It is listed in poor condition. That is off the road right now. That's out of service. And we keep it over at the transportation department and they use it around the parking lot there. Are there any questions on this?
Just a comment. If we have equipment needs in the next coming budget year, I would suggest that we look hard at making the replacements with the current availability of equipment. And also the price is not going to go down. And it's the, the rate of inflation is going to penalize us in the future. If we have a justified need for the equipment, I really strongly support replacing needed equipment as soon as we know we're going to need it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, just so in the blue are the immediate requests, the 23, four for the tractor, the 116, the ground master, and then the 51 and change for the Ford, those that, the ones for the 22, 23.
That's correct.
That's your, your priority items. Got it.
We cannot establish a reserve for purchasing maintenance vehicles. But we, and actually we do not get state aid on, on purchasing these vehicles.
It will be covered under the general operating budget of the operationally that we get, foundation aid that we get as part of a regular expense.
And we buy these off state contract, Linda, vehicles?
Yes, yes. And as you can see, like the, the, the F-350 that we're talking about purchasing next year, that estimated cost is about $51,000, which is, if you were to buy that individually, would probably be more expensive. And we also, we keep the options to somewhat of a minimum.
Any more questions for Linda? All right. Thank you. We'll take that into consideration when we develop the budget. We'll take that into consideration when we develop the budget. Next item for discussion is sub teacher rates.
Uh, yes, uh, I think the board is aware, uh, but maybe the public isn't fully aware that, uh, we are challenged right now for substitute teachers as well as other substitute positions. And as part of trying to develop a strategy to, uh, increase our substitutes, Ms. Cannon, our Director of Human Resources has been working really for the last two and a half to three years on recruitment of more substitutes. And we've been somewhat successful at hiring more substitutes, but given the current situation, uh, with, uh, employee absences at times, you know, really during this period of COVID, the district did a comparable analysis of what our substitute rates are compared to neighboring districts. So we do have people that substitute in multiple districts and we want to try to be competitive. Um, and we're finding that our rates are one of the lower rates within the region. And I'm going to ask, uh, Linda and Marissa to outline what we're proposing. This is just a discussion item tonight. We're not asking the board to vote on it. Uh, it's the first time the board has seen this information. Linda?
Thank you. Uh, so currently our, our substitute teachers are paid a daily rate of $105 and $110 after they, um, sub with us for 40 days in two consecutive years. That those rates were raised, um, back in July of 2019. And at that time the rates were 103 and 108. So it was not a very big increase. Uh, but as, as Mr. Simon said, we're having difficulty finding substitute teachers. So I took a look at surrounding school districts and, um, did a survey of what are they paying their, their substitutes now? And in reviewing this, um, I, I guess what I would, there's another, there's another criteria here that I also, um, considered. In the SRP contract right now, a teaching assistant, a substitute teaching assistant gets paid $1997 an hour at step one for six and a half hours a day. That's 12981, which is over our daily substitute teacher rate. So even getting substitute, even getting teaching assistants to substitute as teachers, well, they would rather be a substitute TA because they make more money. So that's another consideration. So I looked around at the surrounding school districts and, um, I'm suggesting that we, um, at least consider increasing our substitute rate from $105 to $135 per day. And then in order to incentivize our East Green Bush teachers that are retired to come back with us, um, I suggest that we consider $145 per day and that would bring our, our current retirees back, um, to substitute. Uh, this is just open for discussion, a starting point. Um, but as you can see, I attached here a spreadsheet of some of the rates and, and some of the rates are, um, were higher than and some were lower than, but we are really on the lower end of the scale right now.
Thank you, Linda. I just want to add that I did analyze our data for the month of September and October. In the month of September, our substitute fill rate was 84%. And for October, it was 73%, meaning for those months, 16% and 25, 27% of absences went unfilled. And in those instances, um, our existing staff from within the building must be reassigned from other jobs to cover those classrooms, including our teaching assistants and administrators. So I believe that increasing our rate, um, we will be able to more effectively recruit for our substitute teachers, incentivize our retired teachers to come back to the district and then retain our current subs um, that we have. We're seeing that a lot of our subs are on neighboring substitute, uh, lists as well. And, um, if they get a call um, from both our district and the other, um, they're more likely to go with the higher pay, um, position for that day.
Is that fill rate the same as was, as it was pre-COVID or did you see an, an increase due to just overall shortages?
We are seeing it decrease. Um, I actually, um, spoke with Questar the other day, um, because they, um, assist with our absence management system for the substitute caller. And they're seeing a decline across all districts right now. Um, so there's a lot of fears with COVID. Um, and some individuals went into a different career path at this time. So we are seeing, um, a decline.
I would just add that the benefit of having a differential rate for retired East Green Bush teachers, I know many districts have that. Uh, we know those folks. We know they can just walk right into the classroom. They know their colleagues. They know the principals. They know the kids in some cases. They've got the experience with East Green Bush. So, uh, it becomes an issue of, uh, instruction, stability of instruction. If we can attract as many of our retired teachers and raise the rates, uh, to be in our classrooms, particularly during this period.
Linda, what's the, um, the budgetary impact of that, that change? If you were to take the number of subs, you had that new rate that you're recommending roughly number?
Well, it will depend on the number of subs, um, you know, and so I don't have a gross amount. I can certainly report back to you on that as to what it would be so far this year. You know, we'll go through November.
The, the question that comes from, because really the loss of instructional time is to me more valuable than the issue of the money. And I think that the rate is important to attract subs to take the jobs in East Green Bush. And I would support a rate, um, that has increased if you feel that's the right rate that I'll do it. Does anybody have any, I mean, from the number, just, we got to get ahead of the curve, not behind.
Just to reinforce what Mike is saying, um, to fill these positions, Marissa talked about it in general, we're pulling reading teachers.
Right, right.
We're pulling teachers from services that they're providing to cover the classroom. We're pulling teaching assistants that are needed in special education classrooms. We're consolidating study halls into auditoriums. There's things that our administrators are managing on a daily basis that are not, that are disrupting instruction, like, and I'm glad you raised that point. Do we? No, go ahead, go ahead.
No, my question is, is, is we can bump the pay. I, I, I think that's a good idea. But, you know, if there's 10 people on the list, there's 10 people on the list. You know, we're not, um, you know, we have to do something to try to increase the numbers and it's, it's not just us. It is a problem. There were, there's just people that don't want to, don't want to substitute. So I, you know, raising the pay, I don't think is really going to totally solve the problem. We have to do some recruiting to try to, to build that list of, of, of candidates that actually want to be substitutes.
So right now we're posting on OLS. We have a continuous recruitment add-up. It's also on our district website and, um, we've also been reaching out to, um, the area colleges and, um, looking at our student teachers that have, um, interned with us in the past. And we're trying to, as soon as they end their student teaching experience and they have that degree, um, we're trying to, um, pull them in, um, and have them, uh, work and gain meaningful experience. So, uh, that is one of the things that's been very helpful. Uh, one of the other things is, um, Hudson Valley, um, and some of the local colleges have been, um, very kind to us and are allowing us to post on their recruiting platforms as well. Um, so we're currently moving forward with that.
I'm, I'm thinking the time to act is now. We, we cannot lack any process for these kids. And I also support the idea of upping the rates. We gotta get the teachers in the classroom. So the kids can be tutored. It's something that we cannot compromise. And the time to act is now, not to defer for any, uh, any future time.
Yeah, I agree. It's a two-pronged approach and the, um, the benefit of the rate means that if a person, like you said, Marissa, if they have, um, multiple job offers calls, they're to take the highest one as closest to where they live or whatever their convenience is. And I think that if we could at least have that one piece and then expand the recruitment process, um, get creative if we can. I know one of the things that we talked about, uh, at our agency was working with the colleges to see if those experiences can, can count towards their student teaching experience too. So there's a lot of things we can do with the colleges and the, in the college prep programs to try to get credit for those kinds of things as well. And, um, I agree, it's, at least this makes it attractive and, and puts us up against a better pool of candidates to, to maybe take these positions and, and sub almost every day and have a lot of, a lot of, uh, income coming in. So.
And I think the, um, trying to bring back to the Strish retired teachers are big. It's, it's going to be less work for the administrative people because they're going to know what they're doing as a teacher here and how things work. Um, they're just going to jump right into the classroom and start teaching versus some of the other people that may need to learn the ropes a little bit first.
Yeah, I would support it as well. I, I don't think it'll completely solve it. Like you said, Mark, with, um, raising the rates, but it would at least make us competitive because looking at some of these other districts, um,
Everybody wait.
These other districts that, some of them are significantly smaller and have significantly smaller budgets. Um, and they're paying significantly more. So I think it would make us competitive. And then any way we can reach out to the colleges and do, um, recruitment is excellent.
Yeah. Cause if you look at the, the list, it's a good point to note for, you know, Avro Park is right on the corner or it's around the corner. And you look at those rates, that's what we're up against. So, I mean, if, if the board is supportive, I don't want to wait. So I would be open to proposing that because this is not a negotiated rate.
That is correct.
That-
I see Mrs. Squatchy jumping out of her chair with excitement.
That, uh, that, uh, we make a motion to approve the change in the sub rate at this meeting.
To start immediately.
Yes, effective immediately.
To start immediately. So, well, we got to pick a date, a start date, right? Like-
Monday 11/22.
There you go.
I appreciate it.
Frank, do you have a motion from Frank? Is there a second? Joe, wait, hold on a minute. Okay.
Thank you.
Approve your motion. The data is important and the, obviously provided in the instructional time for the students. I know administrators, the scrambling you have to do to, to kind of jiggle things around and, and get things in motion.
Linda, can you just report back how much it's going to cost or it will cost us or did it cost us maybe in February, whatever?
Yep, yep. Great. Okay. Thank you, board. The next item is our board goals and district priority objectives for 21, 22. There is a hard copy of the document available. Right? So, Mr. Simons, you want to do a brief kind of introduction?
I started, uh, I put a document together and I presented at the last board meeting as a conversation starter. And then, uh, uh, Mr. Mann, our board vice president, Mr. Buna, our board president, um, through email, contributed some suggestions for revisions and I asked my secretary Stephanie so that we could track, um, this and Mike had made some suggestions to how to organize it. Um, I put this together. So we started with my document at the last board meeting. Mark sent me an email with, uh, suggestions for revisions, which are included in red. And then Mike's comments are included in blue. So it may not read smoothly. Um, because some of the language is really a choice, but, um, I didn't have any, uh, concerns about any of the revisions. And, um, we're just asking the board to weigh in. We've had these goals in place for, uh, since, since a long time. And we've always had a process whereby, um, the administration has input, but also the board has input. And then the board approves the goals and then we put together our scorecard document and our strategic plan and give the board reports on how we're progressing towards these primary objectives.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. The, is there any other comments based on the, the document or what was edited, added to the document or change? Um, Mark, you want to just kind of give a, your thought process on some of the changes?
Yeah. The first thing is, is, you know, we have four, four goals. Um, and, and I don't think that, you know, goal one is any more important than goal two or four or three. I think those are four goals that, that the board has and that they're equally, uh, as important as, as all of our goals. It's just, you know, um, you know, goal number one, you know, I mean, I would be happy if we didn't even put numbers next to them. Um, but, you know, the biggest thing that, uh, in the first one that I put was, you know, adding diversity, equity and inclusion. And if you look at, um, NISBA put a lot out about it. Uh, New York State Education Department put out a lot, um, that I was able to, uh, sit at a, 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 through a very good, uh, presentation by Mike Ford. Um, and he spoke a lot about it and encourages, um, school districts to, you know, make that part of your, your board goals. Um, again, like Jeff said, you know, my input, you know, just my suggestions, um, are in red. And, um, you know, all of our goals, you know, uh, include academics. Um, but, you know, I'm a big proponent of the trades and making sure that we have not only the, the, you know, the supporting those that want to go to college, but supporting all our students because we have some students that do not want to pursue further education. They want to pursue a career in the trades or other professions or the military or whatever. And I just want to make sure that our goals supportive of, of everybody and whatever choice, you know, our students decide to make after they graduate. So I included a couple of, um, you know, in my suggestions, talking about the, you know, the trades and CTE and things like that, uh, which we do support. But I'd like to see them, you know, in our goals as a board goal to, to support.
Thank you, Mark.
One of these stands out because before COVID, you know, we were really looking at the vaping, trying to, to, um, put something in to prevent vaping in high school and middle school. And unfortunately then COVID happened. So it's nice to see that back in there. I'd like to make sure we're addressing that in the upcoming year to see what we can do to try to prevent that, um, on the campuses.
Any other feedback?
I just, just a comment on our goals as we put them together. These are all pretty much what we talk about week after week. But I think as, uh, where we kind of drifted away from our, our strategic plan with the goals in mind and our report card was COVID. And it, we lost focus, rightfully so. So I think as we move forward with goals, we have to keep in mind what we're going to do to get to that goal. Because we can make all the goals we want, but at some point in time, as we develop them, kind of come up with a loose idea of how you're going to achieve certain things within that. And make sure that we get back to the scorecard to where it's not just something we look at and say, okay, to check the box. But actually, when we get to this point, have a discussion about where we are, what we can do better and, and as we move this forward, because what we're going to try to do, our basic overreaching goal is to get back to normal, is to get back to student-centered activity. So that people can move forward in whatever meaningful way that they determine. I mean, to, to piggyback what Mark said, I'm a huge supporter of a basic goal of success for all students. And that is going to be measured by the individual. So giving them access to what we need for their success is going to be the thing. And the way to ensure that is to stay focused and not let, because I, I'm, I'm hoping that we as a community can kind of put COVID back on its back heel and move this ball forward because quite frankly, I think a lot of folks are just tired of it. And it's just time to refocus, not worry about who hot, wear masks, tests, parties and all this stuff, but get back to educating kids. I think it's really important. And the attendance thing was really a good litmus for that, for us to measure. So thank you for everyone's input.
Any other comments? I think it's a, a, a good blend of addressing the, uh, lost my train of thought. The, addressing the needs of the students as they return to school. Last year, we did an abbreviated version to focus on the COVID issues. Uh, this year, the return to school, the emphasis on, you know, maintaining multiple pathways for students and opportunities for students. And also, um, recognizing their needs going forward, but also addressing the things that we've discovered during the, this time, the climate survey, doing more with diversity, um, equity and inclusion, as Mark indicated, but also not forgetting that our resources are finite in many cases, and we have to make sure that we use them well, use them efficiently and productively to support the students and their learning. Um, so it's a good blend, I think, of, of all those things from what we're aware of. So it's a good blend, I think, of, of all those things from what we were before COVID. What we had to deal with during COVID to just stay open, stay safe and then kind of return and move beyond, like you said, John, to, um, getting to a better place. So what I'd like to do is, uh, give, maybe Jeff, you take out the, the red line and the blue line, get a document that's a draft, pure draft. Um, get it to the board members and then at the December meeting, they give some time to look at it during the review process. And then at December meeting, we, we, we finally make this final, get some more feedback, some final tweaks if you want. And then we'll, uh, move forward at the December meeting. Sound good?
And if anybody tomorrow has any other input, please provide it now. I'll try to incorporate that in the document that I shared with the board. And I appreciate your review of this and your input. It's very helpful. And then we'll meet with our administrators and we'll start to develop, once it's approved, Mike, the, the scorecard document and bring the draft back to you.
And I think the administrators, you know, if there's things in there that you need to support through your, um, the objectives and goals that we have, we need your input too, to make sure that we can provide the resources you need. And I think that we try to do a job with the resources we have been provided through the, um, the different federal funding and the budget process. But again, as we develop the budget coming up, it can never start too soon to address the needs of your, your students and your staff. Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving to regular business, approval of programs for residential disabilities. Any questions or comments there? Need a motion to approve. Frank, second. Kathleen, all those in favor? Approved. Inter municipal agreement for inter, interscholastic hockey merger. Any comments on this before you vote on it? Any, Mr. Leonard, anything we should know about? We're good. Okay. What's that? Eight years too late to, Cheryl, to participate, you're right.
Mr. Peter, I'll just add, um, this is a, a little bit of different agreement than we currently have, um, as part of the merger. Um, what was happening is, um, each school was paying $4,500, which we are still requested to do to be part of the merger. And that covers like official fees and that sort of thing. And, um, and this year we're asked to include an extra $1,000 for, to go towards the ice time. Previous to this, um, families were being assessed a fee individually. So this intermunicipal agreement takes over that fee so that individual families are not, are not, um, assessed that fee. What will happen is at the end of the season, when we have a total on the cost of the ice time, each district will be assessed a certain amount based on the number of players that they have on the team.
Makes sense. I mean, then we should have our parents paying for, um, support for their athletic program if we're supporting the program in general. So, okay. Uh, with that, I need a motion to approve of the agreement. John, second. Cheryl, all those in favor? Approved. Uh, item C is the amendment to the employment agreement with Mr. Simons, our superintendent. Any questions or comments? Need a motion to approve that? John, second. Mark, all those in favor? Approved. Congratulations, Mr. Simons.
Thank you for the board, to the board, and I appreciate your continued support and feedback and guidance. Uh, it really means a lot to me and I appreciate your vote of confidence. Thank you.
You're welcome. Now moving to, uh, committee reports. Our first one is, uh, Marissa.
Thank you. I wanted to provide a brief, um, staffing update to our board. Our special education vacancy at DPS resulting from, um, an employee that relocated, um, out west. We did conduct final interviews last week and we have, um, made, uh, a selection. Um, that individual has accepted the position and the recommendation for hire will be on the first December board meeting. We currently have an AIS leave of absence position at Red Mill. Helen and I, um, were conducting final interviews this week. Um, our Spanish position at Golf Middle School, I was just informed of some great news by Questar this afternoon that we have five candidates that applied for the distance learning opportunity. And interviews are going to be held, um, early next week and Mrs. Barker will be a part of those. We have several teaching assistant positions at Columbia High School and Golf Middle School. All the building level interviews were conducted and they're being, um, moved forward to final rounds. We have some being conducted on Friday of this week and the remaining conducted on before the Thanksgiving holiday next week. We have one data entry machine operator position in Mr. Goodwin's office. That posting will close on November 28th. This is the second time this position has been posted. We have two automotive mechanics. Um, that position closes on November 22nd and we do have one candidate so far. We have a food service helper position at Red Mill Elementary School. Um, that posting closes on November 28th. Phyllis Sanford and I conducted, um, initial interviews for the cook position at Columbia High School. We have selected a finalist and that individual, um, is going to be thinking things over and letting us know of a decision tomorrow. We also have several monitor positions opened, um, across the district. Several bus driver positions opened, um, and we're constantly recruiting for our substitute teachers and also substitute nurses, um, that are licensed. Any questions?
Challenging times, right, Marissa?
Yes, challenging times.
You know, and I appreciate the, the staff's, um, patience and the administrators, the difficulty that these vacancies present. And I just do want to thank you for continued work with, uh, the staff and their support to pick up where there's vacancies. Linda? Anything?
This past, uh, Monday evening, we had a long range planning facilities, um, meeting. And at that meeting, we had guest speakers from the town of North Greenbush. The, uh, Mark Lassavita is the planning board chairperson and he provided us with an update, um, a presentation on the current residential and commercial property of projects that they have going on in the town. Currently there are 11 residential projects that are going on in the town right now. And he reviewed those with us and I did attach a list for your, uh, review. Some of the, uh, residential projects are a little bit larger. There's one called the Gables, which is a 15 lot major subdivision, uh, on Mammoth Springs Road and Warner Road. Uh, those homes are larger homes, um, about $500,000 or more. And then there are some other smaller projects included in there. Uh, he also talked about the Forest Hill Estates. That is off of Route 43. Um, those homes are over a million dollars. There are still some, uh, building lots left that they are actively marketing. So, so, um, we had some updates there. He also talked about the pending commercial projects that are in the town. The Tech Valley project is 193,000 square foot of retail space. And, um, the Agway Drive commercial subdivision is on Route 4. There haven't been any plans, um, submitted on that so far. And then we also talked about the Quackin Dairy Commons, which is a, um, which we had Morgan Ruthman, who is the CEO from the Spiny Group, um, give us a presentation on the Quackin Dairy, uh, Commons project. That is a 24 and a half acre project that is behind the CVS and Berkshire Bank property and in the town of North Greenbush. And, um, that will be a, a mixed use project. There will be some residential units as well as residential apartments, as well as, um, retail units in there.
Near Home Depot?
Yes, be, behind there. Yep. It's on, it's on this side of the, um, exit eight, by 90 exit eight. So as a result of all of this, we also talked about enrollment. And, um, I, I provided a report on our current enrollment this year by building. Currently our total enrollment is 4,066 students. Um, that includes 36 students that are from the pre-K that are in our new pre-K program. Last year at the same time, uh, we had 4,034. So as you can see, um, our enrollment is pretty steady from one year to the next. I did look back in our enrollment studies and I saw that back in 02, 03, we had a high enrollment of 4,626. So we do have some room to grow and, um, we will continue to monitor that. Uh, at future meetings, which we're hoping to have in late January, we plan to have representatives from the town of East Greenbush as well as the town of Skodak to provide us up with updates in those towns as well.
Any questions for Linda? Ignore Greenbush, better get ready for a total reassessment, full value reassessment. I think that's, it's got to be coming. All right. Jim is not here. Is anybody going to do that presentation? Hold off on that.
Just briefly, um, Mr. McHugh has attached the minutes for the last meeting of the committee on curriculum study. The committee curriculum study looks at, uh, each area of the curriculum for potential, uh, revisions, adoptions of constructional materials, instructional materials, professional development. So the, the minutes are provided. Uh, Mr. McHugh is excused from the meeting tonight, but if there are any questions or concerns about any of those, uh, issues, you can email me or Mr. McHugh. I would be happy to put it back on as a discussion topic at the next meeting.
Yes, I'd, I'd like to see that happen.
Okay, very good.
And then Jeff?
The only thing I want to mention related to Marissa's report on staffing is, um, we lost our very good SRO, uh, Jeff Russo from the Rensselaer County Sheriff's Department. I just want to thank him publicly for all the contributions he's made to Golf Middle School and also to the district. He's accepted a district, a position with Schenectady School District. However, uh, we are meeting to do interviews tomorrow. The sheriff's department has two candidates. Uh, we're working with Captain Pyle from the sheriff's department and, uh, Mrs. Barker, myself, Ms. Cannon, I've asked Mark Mann, our vice president, who participated in the interviews the last time to serve on the interview committee. We have two candidates for the position. We're interviewing at nine, uh, and 10 tomorrow morning. So I think it's either 9:30 or, uh, or nine and then 10 o'clock tomorrow morning. So we're optimistic that we will be able to fill the position soon. And the sheriff's department has identified two candidates.
And when is Mr. Russo, Officer Russo's last name?
He's gone.
Oh, he's gone.
We have, they have provided a sub.
Oh.
Uh, they've been, they've had a, I think a sub has been in place most days, if not all days. Mrs. Barker, is that correct?
Good.
We were in Washington. He had tried to notify me earlier. He wanted to notify me in person. I wasn't there. So, um, he had a start date with Schenectady. So, but, but the sheriff's department has been good about filling in.
Sounds good. Thank you for participating, Mark. All right. Next order of business is table motions. I don't have any at this time. Uh, old business board members, anything that we missed? Bring up? No? Okay, good. Moving on to the consent agenda, items A through F. Any questions, comments regarding the consent agenda? Mark?
I just want to thank, uh, Columbia High School Board Support Administration to get that, uh, uh, evening safety supervisor position hired back on the books and get that person in there so we can have that, uh, supervision, you know, uh, after the, the school hours. So I think that's very beneficial to, to, you know, get that back up and running.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else? I know in our gifts and, uh, budget there, you can see several from Harvard, which is nice. Always good to see those contributions. And I hope that the, uh, Columbia Science Olympia does well. All right. With that, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mark, second. Joanne, all those in favor? Approved. Um, no addendum this evening, Mr. Simons?
No addendum.
Moving on to new business, board members, any new business to bring forward? No? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to the next item. Second public forum? Yes, Helen.
Could you hear me?
We did. I don't know if the audience could, but.
Uh, it really will make a difference. I can tell you just from the trenches that one of my personal favorite subs that sometimes works in our building, not very often. Um, she's also a community member and a parent and she said she loves subbing here the most, but she will often go to a $20 a day more district. That's $100 extra a week in her pocket and $500 extra a month for her family. So I really do think this will improve the situation and I just want to say thank you for your quick action tonight.
Thank you, Helen. Anyone else? No? Okay. We'll move to the second board forum. We'll start at my left with Cheryl. Good. Michelle. Good. John. Good. Marcus. Good. Jennifer. Good. Kathleen. Joanne and Frank. I just want to say that, uh, congratulations to the balls, boys volleyball team for moving on to the States. Playing where and who, Mr. Leonard? Do we have an idea? Yep. Finalist? And location? So, very nice. Great, great. And we wish them much success on their journey to the States and, uh, depending on the outcome, either way, we like to honor the team. Okay. So we'll do that. Thank you. I don't have anything else. We do have need for an executive session for purposes of personnel and contractual items. So we don't anticipate any business after the meeting. Um, it's pretty chilling here, Mr. Gab. Is the heat on yet?
And also, Mr. Gab, while you're dealing with the heat, can you tell me what room we're going to be in?
I'm just kidding. No, it's transition time.
Down that way to the right, to the left. Okay.
Yep. I need a motion to move into executive session. Frank, second. Kathleen, all those in favor? All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night. Appreciate it.